To order on Tuesday, February 14th, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderwoman Timmons will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and the greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
My prayers are to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan. Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Moran. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Juddi.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm alone. I am on, via Zoom, to a medical issue, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
I'm here. I'm at home. I'm in an enclosed space. No one else is in the room. And I am on Zoom because I have a cold and I do not want to get anybody infected.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Twelve present, three absent.
Thank you. Also with us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Madam President. Well, first, I wanted to speak about R-23082, which is the community power legislation. And I see Doria Brown and Deb Chisholm in the audience. I want to thank them for all of the effort and work they've put in on this over a period of years, really. Now, community power is a way authorized by the state legislature to introduce additional competition into the electric market and to potentially provide national consumers with a lower price of electricity, lower than the 22 cents currently being charged by Eversource. Now, if you look at your electric bill, it consists of a number of components, one of those being the cost of the electricity itself. And that is where the savings could be realized. What the legislature has authorized is one or a group of communities getting together to purchase power on behalf of customers who are currently being served by Eversource. Now, this means customers who are being provided their electricity through Eversource rather than an alternate provider, and there are a number of people who are already with an alternate provider. And the way this would work is, the way that we've proceeded is that we join the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, a group of about 17 cities, towns, and one county, including Dover, Hanover, Cheshire County, and other communities. And together, the proposal is that we would, this group of communities in one county, would together, with the use of a professional ascend, a professional power buyer that works with community power organizations across the country, including in California and in Massachusetts, and a banking institution would together buy power on behalf of national consumers currently served by Eversource. Now, this transition would occur automatically, and no one would really notice the difference, except that potentially, they could pay less on the line for the purchase of power. The Eversource would continue to bill the customers. Eversource would continue to be paid for all of the items on the bill, except for that one line, which is the purchase of power. Eversource is principally a distribution company. They would continue to be paid for the use of their lines and poles and for their efforts in providing electricity in that way to homeowners and businesses. The launch could occur as soon as April or May, depending on circumstances in Concord. And one thing that I do want to stress is that a consumer's choice is completely retained by this legislation, in the sense that, yes, anyone who is currently buying power from Eversource will be automatically switched over. But anyone who wishes to stay with Eversource, or either at the beginning or at any time during, after the program is initiated, anyone who wants to switch back to Eversource can do so. That's what the state law provides, and that is the way it would work. So a consumer actually has the possibility of going back and forth between the national community powers, we're going to call it, and Eversource. So given the sky-high electric rates that we have seen recently, this will introduce competition, retain choice for our consumers, and potentially save people a lot of money. If we can save 2.5 cents per kilowatt, the savings to an average consumer, residential consumer, would be about $100 a year. And finally, the professionals that came before the committee, not everyone was there, but said that if we run out today, we would save a considerable amount versus Eversource charges. So I hope you will follow the recommendation of the committee, in my opinion, act on behalf of, in the interest of national consumers, and enable this legislation to go forward by, of course, voting to pass it. Second, Madam President, I wanted to mention that there is some good news at the police department. They were able to hire four additional officers, who are starting very soon. They all are from other departments. This is a new approach taken by the PD. And three more are on the way. So there are down nearly 15, but maybe it's 11. I think it's 15 and 11, though, with the four, and then three more coming. One thing that I think is obviously true is that Nashua pays police officers very well, and this helps the department persuade or attract recruits from other departments, like a city like Concord or a town like Londonderry. Police officers want to come here because of the pay. That's a good thing. And because the department has a very good reputation, very professional. So there's some good news there. The legislation, a few pieces of legislation regarding the Mohawk Tannery cleanup are on the agenda for a first reading. They will be referred to the appropriate committees. I won't get into the details now. We have discussed that in the past, but I'm sure there will be a lot of discussion of that. The proposal to clean up the polluted Mohawk Tannery site in the weeks ahead. But certainly, that is important legislation. It deserves everyone's attention. Finally, I did want to welcome everyone or wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day. And I hope you enjoy it at home with your loved ones, your family. And so I wish you well. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to the remarks by the mayor? Anyone? Seeing none, recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the regular and special Board of Alderman meetings of December 13th, 2022, January 10th, 2023, January 11th, 2023, and February 7th, 2023 be accepted and placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Downtown Improvement Committee regarding minutes with recommendation for support. Communication has been received from Sam Durfee, Planning Director, regarding referral from the Board of Alderman on proposed petition for street discontinuance, Dozer Road lots A-990, 132-85, A-994, A-768, A-68, 132-1, A-67, and A-58. Communication has been received from Sam Durfee, Planning Director, regarding referral from the Board of Alderman on proposed O-23-040, amending the land use code regarding parking space requirements for middle and high schools.
Alderman Como.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and allow for the acceptance and placing on file of a communication received after the agenda was prepared from Alderman Sullivan.
Motion is to suspend the rules. Would the clerk take the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
Alderman Como, did you have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. My motion was to accept the communication and place it on file.
Okay, there being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have Andy Prohlman.
Madam President, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Prohlman, attorney with Perney &amp; Prohlman here in Nashua. I'm here on behalf of the Flatley Company tonight. We are seeking approval of the discontinuance of a portion of Dozer Road in the south end of town, north of the Sheraton Tower. And I can speak to this now or when the matter comes up before the board. Whatever your pleasure.
No, it's fine.
Okay. Madam President, members, you have the recommendation of the planning board. You have the positive recommendation of the infrastructure committee. We are seeking this discontinuous of Dozer Road to allow for the development of a subdivision that was approved last August by the National Planning Board. And portions of Dozer Road interfere with the back of house lots and interfere with some of the roadways that are part of that subdivision. The subdivision comes off of Spindelwood in the Lancashire Heights neighborhood. And the petition is to discontinue Dozer Road and ultimately convey that to the Flatley Company so that the subdivision project can go forward. They are looking to get in the ground this spring, start the project. I believe they've already started cutting some trees. And so we're looking for the board's final passage of this tonight. I did have some subdivision plans. Do you have those?
I do.
In case anyone had any questions. There is a condition of approval recommended by the planning board and recommended by the infrastructure committee, that there is a small triangular parcel of land, about 2,000 square feet in total, that when discontinuing Dozer Road, it will cut off access to that little triangle of land. And it's in the very bottom right-hand corner of the plan that's on the screen before you. That is a city-owned parcel of land. And the condition from the planning board and the infrastructure committee was that Flatley Company either grant an access easement or purchase that small little triangle. The Flatley Company has agreed to grant an access easement, and we will start the process of acquisition. And it's one of those parcels that the appraisal is probably going to cost more than the value of the land, but that's part of the process. But the Flatley Company has agreed to grant an access easement as part of this process, and we have a draft of that I'll be submitting soon to the staff. And so with that, Madam President, I can answer any questions from the board.
Not at this time. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Matthew Guthro?
Matthew Guthro, 104 Fon Lane. Good evening. I'm here before you to speak against ordinance O-2219, which is recommended for final passage at this meeting. We already have in place an ordinance that gives the Downtown Improvement Committee funding that's contingent upon surplus revenues gained from parking enforcement. The bottom line, parking enforcement revenues were down last year. Unfortunately, decisions by the mayor and his economic development director, blessed by this Board of Alderman, to spend $100,000 in taxpayer funds to reduce our parking in favor of outdoor dining in our historic downtown, has caused this dilemma. This all should have been sorted out in the 2023 budget sessions, but it got kicked forward until now. And we are left with this unnecessary legislation that is being created to give a flat $100,000 to the Downtown Improvement Committee. Now, we all want to see our downtown bright and vibrant, but I have serious concerns about this committee. First, more than half of their members' terms have already expired, and they barely have enough members to hold a quorum. Second, I recall the chair of the Downtown Improvement Committee, when it came to budget discussions last year, bringing up the difficulty of getting city staff to attend their meetings or even post their minutes. And looking through those minutes, you can see that they haven't had any city staff attend their meetings, including Director Cummings, until October of 2022. Third, finally, when was the last time any of you attended their meetings? The last time was by the author of this legislation, who hasn't attended a meeting of the Downtown Improvement Committee since August of 2022. So in conclusion, you are being asked to give $100,000 in taxpayer funds, in perpetuity, to a committee who barely has enough members appointed by the mayor to hold a quorum
One minute.
that has little support by city staff at their meetings and what I'll call infrequent attendance and support by the Board of Alderman. I'd say that the Downtown Improvement Committee has far greater challenges than funding sources, and I call upon you to reject this unnecessary legislation, which is merely a last-minute attempt to circumvent your annual budget process. Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding contract for professional services related to Nashua Downtown Riverfront Implementation Project.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, Madam President. I motion to approve a contract for electrical engineering and lighting design of the Riverfront Project with Fitzmeier and Tochi Associates Incorporated in the amount of $144,000. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development. Fund 81700 Infrastructure Improvements/Bond. By roll call, please.
Heard the motion. Is there a discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
13 yays, 0... 12 yays, 0 nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding contract award in excess of $1 million, Continental Paving, Inc.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve the award of the construction contract for the 2023 paving program. Contract 1 to Continental Paving, Inc., in the amount of $1,684,994. Funding will be through the Department 160 Admin Engineering Fund, Account 54210, paving bond, $52,500. Account 54210, stormwater and $1,059,250. Account 54210, so we have, by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
12 yays, 0 nays. Communication has been received from John Griffin, CFO, Treasurer, Tax Collector, regarding DPW request to change the timing of the purchase of two dump trucks on the SURF schedule.
Yeah. Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to approve the replacement of a six-wheel dump truck, which was included in the fiscal year 2024 SURF schedule, and defer the purchase of a 10-wheel dump truck approved in the fiscal year 2023 SURF schedule due to the unavailability for the Street Department, which is contingent upon approval of the Board of Public Works and the Finance Committee. And Madam President, can it be by roll call?
Yes. You've heard the motion? Is there a discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
12 yays, 0 nays.
That motion carries. Petitions.
Petition for street discontinuance, Dozer Road lots A-990, 132-85, A-994, A-768, A-68, 132-1, A-67, and A-58.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to grant the petition for street discontinuance, Dozer Roads lots A-990, 132-85, A-994, A-768, A-68, 132-1, A-67, and A-58, on the condition that the petitioner either grant the city an access easement or purchase lot 114233 from the city for fair market value by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there a discussion on this motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
12 yays, 0 nays.
And that motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Animal and Dog Park Advisory Committee. Amber Morgan, reappearance term to expire September 10th, 2025, 20 Lock Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Performing Arts Center Board of Trustees, Mary Lou Blaisdale, new appointment, term to expire February 14th, 2028, 206 Main Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. Ian Buckley, new appointment, term to expire February 14th, 2027, 207 Main Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. Judith Carlson, new appointment, term to expire February 14th, 2026, 15 Manchester Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Richard Lannon, new appointment, term to expire February 14th, 2028, 7D Taggart Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. Jay Minkaroff, new appointment, term to expire February 14th, 2025, 13 Mount Pleasant Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Amber Morgan, new appointment, term to expire February 14th, 2026, 20 Lock Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Lindsay Rinaldi, new appointment, term to expire February 14th, 2027, 2 Lock Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Philip Sontas, new appointment, term to expire February 14th, 2024, 14 Ashland Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the December 19th, 2022 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the January 3rd, 2023 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the December 6th, 2022, January 11th, 2023 Joint Meeting of Planning and Economic Development and Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Airport Authority.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappearance of Farrell Woods, 162 Bush Hill Road Hudson, to the Airport Authority with a term to expire January 10th, 2028. I don't see him in the room.
Ethics Review Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the new appointments of Lindsay Robinson, Main Street, Nashua, and Michael J. Tabasco, 5 Federal Hill Road, Nashua, to the Ethics Review Committee with terms to expire January 10th and January 24th, 2026. And neither of them are here this evening. And neither of them are here this evening. They'll be sworn in later.
Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee.
Confirm the reappointments of Pamela Anderson, 8 Plainfield Lane, Nashua, Jeff Hannigan, 32 Hood Street, Nashua, Paula Lockheed, 4 Westbrook Drive, Nashua, and Tricia Mullin, 275 Broad Street, Nashua, to the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee with terms to expire January 10, 2026. They will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-23-082, authorizing the mayor to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R-23-082, authorizing the mayor to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire and member service contract, and also that the Board of Aldermen adopt the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire's energy portfolio risk management, retail rates, and financial revenue policies, as well as the data, security, and privacy policy by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say one thing about resources rates. So, starting February 1, they went from 22.57 to 20.22. And I'm just hoping that by the time they release the next rates will be probably late spring or June-July-ish. And I'm expecting them, based on what I've heard, to go even lower than that. So, I'm hoping that going into this community power plan gives us an even better rate, or at least... I would hate if it backfired and went the other way. I'm still for it, and I still think it's a good idea. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not end up by some terrible mistake, putting people on a plan when all of a sudden every source goes lower and we have to get people to switch off, which, you know, people, they don't always know that they've been switched. And so, I just want to make sure we're doing whatever the best thing is for the citizens of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thank you. And that motion carries, and Resolution 2382 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-22-019, changing the Downtown Improvements Funding Plan.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move for final passage of O-2219 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Como.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, I initially signed on as a cosponsor of this legislation. And admittedly, that was because when I read it for the first time, I thought that it was doing something different than it was. And after listening to the arguments in committee and correcting some of my own misconceptions, this legislation is not something I support any longer, so I will not be voting for it.
Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
No.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
No.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Eleven yays, two nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance 2319 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O-23-040, amending the land use code regarding parking space requirements for middle and high schools.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-23040 by roll call. I'd like to speak to it just briefly.
Alderman Dow.
For those that hadn't been to any of the committee meetings, this got a favorable recommendation from the Planning Board, also from Planning itself. And it is to correct an ordinance that's old and not accurate. And it's to allow for additional parking spaces constrained by one of two things, either the amount of land we have at the middle school or high school, and the zoning. So, it's basically the maximum amount of parking spaces is increasing from 2 to 2.5 per classroom. And this is because today we have additional staff in schools we didn't have when this ordinance was originally written, or the original zoning, rather. And with paraprofessionals, psychologists, added nursing staff, added food service staff, additional people in the front office, et cetera. So, in order to have enough parking, I recommend we pass this.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance 2340 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-23-084, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Education and the Nashua School Custodian Union Local 365 Council 93, AFSCME, AFL-CIO, from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2025, in related transfers.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Clemmons, sorry, Alderman Govea, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Tebow, did you want to be added? Thank you. Alderman Tebow as well.
First reading of R-23-085, relative to the acceptance of 58,753 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Exotic Species Program into authorize the transfer of matching funds.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Dow, Alderman Karen, and myself. Alderman Tebow and Alderwoman Kelly.
President Wiltshire, I don't think you saw my hand on the last one, but I was hoping to be added to that one, too, please.
Okay, thank you. Given its first reading, I'll sign Resolution 2385 to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-23-086, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease with Rambling House LLC.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Finance Committee.
First reading of R-23-087, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $525,150 for the purchase of one new 850L crawler dozer for the Division of Public Works.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dow. Anyone else? No. Okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, March 27, 2023, in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of R-23-088, approving master concept plan for Mohawk Tannery redevelopment.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Como, Alderman Dow, Alderman Govea, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-23-041, authorizing a stop sign on Topaz Drive at its intersection with Kelly Street.
Additional sponsors: Alderman Cle. Did you have your hand up? Okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
I do, Alderman.
Oh, sorry. Okay, Alderman Kelly.
First reading of O-23-042, allowing leases for spaces in the Water Street parking lot.
Additional sponsors: Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Dow, Alderman Govea, and myself, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cle, Alderman Lopez.
Yep.
Okay, messed me up. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O-23-043, amending the zoning map by rezoning portions of the Veterans Memorial Parkway, Intervell Street, and Huey Street in land situated west of the Veterans Memorial Parkway to see urban residents, R-C District.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Como, Alderman Dow, and myself, Alderman Tebow. Given its first reading, I'll assign it to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the Planning Board, and schedule a public hearing conducted by Planning and Economic Development Committee at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, March 21, 2023, in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of O-23-044, establishing the Veterans Memorial Parkway redevelopment overlay district.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Como, Alderman Dow, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the Planning Board, and schedule a public hearing conducted by the Planning and Economic Development Committee at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, March 21, 2023, in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of O-23-045, amending the zoning map by adding the Veterans Memorial Parkway redevelopment overlay district.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Como, Alderman Dow, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the Planning Board, and schedule a public hearing conducted by the Planning and Economic Development Committee at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, March 21, 2023, in the Aldemantic Chamber. Period for general public comment. We have one individual signed up, Matthew Guthro.
Good evening again, Matthew Guthro, 104 Font Lane. I wanted to bring up a concerning statement that was brought up at the last budget meeting on February 8. During that meeting, the discussion went back and forth on the funding legislation for the Downtown Improvement Committee that you voted on this evening. The Chair, Alderman Dodd, brought up the fact that even though parking revenues were low last year, they were going to go up once the Performing Arts Center had opened. The Chair had to be reminded at that meeting that there's no parking enforcement in the downtown after 7:00 PM. That's when Alderman O'Brien chimed in to reassure everyone that we've already fixed that. And he continued, "You'll find out about that later." Well, I don't know about you, but I haven't seen any legislation that has come through subcommittees or this full Board of Aldermen that dramatically changes our parking ordinances here in the city of Nashua. I was shocked. I'm surprised that many of you that were in that room that night weren't shocked as well. Madam President, you were there. Transparency in government. That's all we ask for as citizens. Look around at your colleagues on this day. Why do we have Aldermen voted upon by our residents sitting here in this room? Why do we even need to hold public hearings? Why? When the outcomes are already determined by closed-door meetings by a select few? Think about this. We are in this chamber on Valentine's Day. And if we truly want to share the love for our great city, we need to be clear, accountable, and truthful with our citizens on how we pay our... how our tax dollars are being spent and the ways and means by which we govern our great city. Thank you.
Remax by members of the board. Start on this side. Alderman O'Brien.
I'm good.
Okay. Anyone? Alderman Cle.
Yes. I just basically want to say that I am glad that we did pass the Downtown Improvement New Funding. I think they are an important asset to the city. I don't know who does or doesn't attend that meeting, but I do know that those that are running the meeting are doing a very good job, and they have my support. And thank you, Madam President.
Who else? Alder Lopez.
I have a question. Did this letter that was on the desk here, was it entered in? Okay. I want to make sure I reference it in the public is able to see it. There's a communication from Alderman Sullivan requesting that we do a special committee for the Mohawk Tannery Project. I was not contacted with that. So, the first I found out about that was, you know, here. So, I think traditionally, if an Alderman who's representing one ward were to make proposals that affect another one, you would maybe mention that to that Alderman? But it's possible that Alderman Sullivan wanted to be so transparent that he introduced it to everybody at the same time, which is fair. But I would say that I do not think that a special committee is necessarily a good idea and would need to be considered much more carefully and discussed with residents and with the people involved with the project with regard to timeframe. Because I think what we've consistently been hearing and seeing with just a presentation alone is that we don't want to necessarily politicize or overburden a project that that neighborhood really, really needs. We need to clean up Mohawk Tannery. We need to take decisive action and move forward with steps. And the neighbors are extremely cautious of any politically motivated efforts to slow that down or adjust its outcome. I realize that anything in the city of Nashua belongs to all of the city of Nashua, but this is their backyard. And I think we should listen to their voices if we're going to start adding layers of administration. I think the Mayor's Department has been transparent since this project was announced. I think that the planning and proposal and the developers have been very, very active, interacting with the neighborhoods. That may not be something that the general public is aware of because there's many projects happening on in Nashua. And there's many different priorities that come up as they approach their decision points. But this has always been a priority for those neighbors, and they have been very consistently following what's going on. So, I think their voices would probably be more important on this matter. Those are just my opinions as the Ward Four Aldermen. In addition to those comments, I would also like to thank everybody who supported the chili cook-off for veterans on Sunday. We had a great turnout. We had some support from local businesses, a new one, The Good Place, which hasn't even fully opened yet, contributed. And it's important to remember that when we have holidays that we're all able to celebrate, we remember that not everybody's able to celebrate them equally. And our veterans have served our country and have done everything they can to protect our rights. So, doing something small like thanking them on Valentine's Day and having, you know, something to kind of pick them up a little bit over the weekend, especially since the Patriots weren't in the Super Bowl and they needed something to celebrate, is important. So, I want to thank everybody who supported that, everybody who donated chili, and the veterans themselves, who were, you know, contributed, obviously, the winning pots of chili and did a great job of working with each other. So, thank you very much.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I wanted, since it is Valentine's Day, it is a pretty... It's more than just Valentine's Day for my wife and I. We actually officially became a couple nine years ago today. And since I am here and she is at home, I want to wish her a happy Valentine's Day. I did see her earlier. We did go out to dinner last night and had a great dinner. And we celebrated early. But happy Valentine's Day to everybody, especially my beautiful wife at home.
Alderman Como.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say thank you and good luck to everyone who's here instead of out to dinner with their significant other right now. And also, best of luck this weekend. Saturday is the Division One Championships for High School Wrestling. South has a number of highly seeded wrestlers that are going to be competing on Saturday. And if Proud Papa can have his moment of indulgence, my sons... They released the rankings today. My son Connor is currently the third seeded wrestler in the division at his weight class. So, best of luck to all the South wrestlers that are going for state championships this weekend.
Congrats to your son.
Thank you.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to give a shout out. We had the Sixth Annual Chocolate Stroll on Saturday. It was a great event downtown, about 20-plus downtown businesses participating. It was a really good time.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I also would like to wish my husband a happy Valentine's Day. Only it's 48 years of Valentine's. So, but the other thing is tomorrow is the Mayor's Ward Seven meeting at Dr. Chris School. It'll start at 6:00 PM. And I know that he's trying to keep it to one hour and that we want to make sure that we can answer all your questions. But if you have something that you really is important for you, if you send something to me, I'll try to bring it with me or try to get some answers the other time for you. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President, I just got a couple things. First, just regarding that letter that Alderman Sullivan sent out, there's one piece in there where he talks about putting two committees together for the Downtown Barriers Committee, and there was, we didn't do that, we always do that, we do that for a lot of different items. That's why we have these committees, because then you can maybe put two together to work on some of these bigger issues. I think, you know, to Alderman Lopez's point, I don't think we need another committee either. I think we have the committees that are there. You just got to make sure that, you know, they hit all the committees they're supposed to on the different issues that will come up through this huge, huge plan. The next thing, you know, I know we're not supposed to say names of people in the audience, but, and I won't this time, I'll just say to Mr., thank you for coming. It's been a while since we've had people come to public comment, and I always, whether I agree with it or I don't agree with it, I think it's important, and I think people are staying away, and I don't think they should. I think they should come and say their piece for the time that they have, so, thank you to him for continuing to come, it's been a little while since we've seen him. And also, congratulations to Fairgrounds Middle School that won the Tri-County Basketball Championship over the weekend, and Coach Dan Caruso, who did an awesome job with those kids, including my own. And then, finally, for my wife, it's her birthday today, probably one of the toughest birthdays outside of maybe Christmas that you can have, and so, us being both sick and, you know, having to come to this meeting, it's not much of a Valentine's Day or birthday, but I just want to wish her a happy birthday and a great Valentine's Day, thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President, I wasn't going to mention anything, but I did get triggered by Alderman Clemmons. I did spend the day up at Conked, and here I am in the chamber. But, honey, I'll be home soon, please take my picture off the milk carton. But, you know, I just would like to, just to briefly rebut, but basically, to keep the clear and accountable and truthful end of it, what happens at one particular meeting does not really get, need to get in depth, particularly when the subject matter isn't germane to what we're getting into. And that being said, I do recognize the citizen that did say it, because it was the perfect segue into committee assignments, committee announcements of what's going to happen. I did give the forewarning, the parking study is getting ready to roll out. Put your seatbelts on, folks, it's going to be, not in one meeting, not in two, but it's going to take several meetings, and with the full board and everybody else, there's other potential changes. It's going to involve public works, coming down to trash collection, everything else, we have to get it right, and we have to get it right from the get-go, not piecemeal it. So, if people say that it's taking a while, we're trying to get all the pieces to the jigsaw puzzle together. So, I'm looking forward to it, and Madam President, not to jump you, but if you're ready for committee assignments, I got a couple of good ones for you.
Committee announcements?
Ah, perfect segue, thank you, Madam President. There's going to be a joint meeting of infrastructure in P E D C Wednesday, February 22nd, to discuss the B I D A, the B I D A, and it's going to be the introduction with that committee with the parking study. And then, coming in the future, it will be infrastructure meetings on March 8th and March 22nd. Thank God they didn't write March 17th to discuss the parking stuff. So, it's coming, and going to need all your help and your assistance to make sure we get this right. Thank you, Madam President.
Other committee announcements? None? Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to motion that the February 14th Valentine's Day meeting, 2023, of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Juddy.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
13 yeas, 0 nays.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:25 PM. Thank you, everyone, happy Valentine's Day.